Good afternoon, this meeting of the Hamilton City School Board of Education will come to order. Mr. Frazier, we call a roll.
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Kopus?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
I believe we have a presentation on Crystal Owl Staff Recognition, I think Mr. Wright, is that correct?
So, wanted to take a few moments to recognize an individual with today being the last day of school for students here in the district, we reflect on the year and sometimes we have an opportunity to recognize those who've been impactful. Working with Tyler Joel and the Horseman Insurance Company, this is the second year we've had the opportunity to recognize an employee with the Crystal Owl Award, sponsored by Tyler and the Horseman Company. Horseman has annually provided Crystal Apple Awards for educators. Last year, the recognition program was expanded here in our district and we get to recognize a Crystal Owl Award winner for an individual staff who exemplifies the qualities we seek in all of our employees. Amy Butterfield came to work in the district. I was told she can't handle any more today, so I'm gonna be really nice about this. Amy knows where I live, so. Amy Butterfield came to work in the district in August 1996 as a part-time English-as-second-language tutor. Amy was a pioneer in our ESL program of support in these nearly 30 years of service in the district. Since 1996, our ESL needs have increased by over 2,500 percent.
Wow.
In 2015, the need for tutors expanded into a need to have specific ESL teachers to support our students' needs. Amy became one of our full-time ESL teachers in the district in 2015. In recent years, Amy has worked at Highland Elementary as our ESL teacher, supporting not only students from Highland neighborhood, but also Ridgway, Brookwood, and Bridgeport. During her time in this position, she has continued to adjust to the ever-changing state requirements, different screenings, testing protocols, and has served as a district mentor for new staff in ESL. Amy will be retiring from the district next week. The district would like to take this opportunity to recognize her as our second annual Crystal Owl Award recipient for the Hamilton City School District. Anyone who knows Amy will tell you she doesn't like to be the center of attention, so I may be in trouble for this, but I would like to ask that she come at this time to receive this award and for just a moment get the attention she deserves for the years of dedicated service to so many students of the Hamilton community.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
We can get a picture as well.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holbrook?
Mrs. Baker, if I may?
Yes.
I've seen Amy in action at Bridgeport, I mean, we were at Bridgeport and Jefferson, and she has done, had a tremendous relationship with students, hardworking, and it's, this is a very well-deserved way to end the school year for you and everything that you've gone through, and I wish you the very best in retirement. It's fun. I highly recommend it.
Yeah.
Just don't run for school board, no, I'm just kidding. So, anyway, congratulations and very proud of you and all the other teachers, I know this is last day and craziness, and, but it's been a great year with, with all the presentations we had, if you don't mind, I'll expand a bit, but with all the, all the, all of the presentations we've had this year, as a school board member, I'm proud of our district, I'm proud of our teachers and what I see going on with our students. Yeah, we have a great report card too, but all the different things that have been going on in the district, thank you very much for Amy and for all the rest of you who have worked so hard for our schools and for, most simply, for our kids, so thank you very much. Enjoy your summer, guys.
I would echo those comments, Mr. Sprague, thank you. Mr. Holbrook?
Amy, you may not know this, but when I came here in 2015, we were struggling with ELL, ESL, and that population was just starting to explode. And the comment around central office was, "We don't know, just ask Amy Butterfield." Now, that's been a hidden secret that you may not be aware of, but your expertise has helped guide us from a programming standpoint on where we are today, through, you know, your experiences, your feedback and that, and that's something that will be here forever, and so you've left a long legacy and you should be very proud of that because it's all about servicing kids. And that population is going to continue to grow and we're going to continue to work through some of those challenges, but, you know, I'm not sure we can always replace experienced individuals like you. We'll, we'll have someone else in the position, but I don't know if I can ever replace the nearly 30 years of experience and, and the passion. It really comes down to a passion, you have to have the passion to do it, and so I want to personally thank you for, for the time that I've been able to be here with you, but also your time in Hamilton as a whole. It's, it's been great for kids, thank you.
Ms. Baker, I know they're having a retirement ceremony back at Highland, so if they want to leave, I just want to make sure they're, it's not rude for them to get up and leave.
Have fun.
You mean they won't hear for the rest of us?
Thank you.
They may have to recast. There you go.
Mr. Holbrook?
Yeah, next on, next on our agenda tonight, we have an update from our district's Fine Arts Program. Mrs. Spurlock took a leap of faith in January and said, "You know what, I'm gonna take this program over in January," and, and we had a long talk over at the high school about it, and she said, "You know, I'm gonna try this." I could not be happier with her leadership over the last five months, and I know we're throwing a lot at her to present tonight, giving everything that, that has happened, but she eagerly wanted to do this, and, you know, I think you're gonna really enjoy what you see, and I look so much, I look very forward to the next several years with, with you leading that program and, and where we can go. I, I don't know where it goes, I, I know, but I know with your leadership, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, fun to watch. So, without further ado, Wendy Spurlock here to give us a fine arts update.
All right, I've been told 10 minutes, so let me see if I can do this. If you are not familiar with me, I graduated from Hamilton High in 1994, I'm a lifetime resident, I'm a mother of two Hamilton High graduates now. I graduated from Miami and came back to teach at Hamilton High in 1998, was part of a cohort with the district in Miami to get my administrative license in 2001, 26 years in the district, I was ready for a change. With our performing arts, we keep busy with our concerts, we have four main concerts throughout the year, but we really keep busy when competition season starts. The fall marching band season into the winter competitive season for Winter Winds, MP, Winter Guard Show Choir, and our a cappella group. And we also try to do several things for the community, a cappella group was invited to perform at the Hamilton City Council Meeting once, and just recently, the Hamilton High Jazz Band went to the Firemen's Convention and helped with their opening ceremony. So with our drama department, we always want to do a fall play, which this year was Clue, and a spring musical was Shrek. Our new drama directors, Nick and Anna Brown, are planning to follow that along with a winter, whether it be a one-act student-driven project, or maybe even a cabaret-style show that is student-driven in the winter. Prestige is one of our two competitive show choir groups, and if you were at graduation, you got to hear one of their songs. LeWaya Anthony was the soloist, and she received many Best Performer Awards this year, along with Devon Adams. Cutting Edge is our seventh through ninth, seventh through ninth grade show choir, they're competitive too, and they've really stepped up their game. We face a lot of tough competition when it comes to middle school show choir, but this year, Cutting Edge was getting second place at several of their competitions. And Harmonix is our newest group, only in its second year. They competed this year, they won first place in the quarterfinals, they won third place in the semifinals. We were really hoping for a wild card visit, or invite I should say, to the New York City Finals, but we didn't get it, but we did settle for top 21 in the country. They, it finished their season by making a video as well as recordings that are available on Spotify. Our marching band program, starting with our junior high, both Wilson and Garfield, they invited professors, one from Miami and one from Wright State, to work with their students and help prepare them for their spring concert, as well as give them a little taste of a college professor and a music-style classroom. If you're not familiar with our competitive teams, our Winter Guard won first with various MEPA competitions, they're dressed in silver to represent the Little Monopoly Guy, because their theme was the monopoly board. Our Winter Winds, they did a cage bird theme. MP is our indoor marching percussion ensemble, and they had a mystery theme. Our jazz band does not compete, but they do get invited places, they went to the Jazz Festival and they took a soloist, Patton Case, and then that picture I added, they took a soloist to the Firemen's Convention, and it was Matty Wagonfield. We received a lot of compliments the other day, and a four-star general passed word along from this person to this person to me and finally said, "She was wonderful, the jazz band was wonderful." Matty was also our Fiona in Shrek. The marching band had a successful fall season, and I want to let you know that they are planning a Florida trip in January 2025. This trip will give students the opportunity to perform in a parade, as well as different opportunities in the park to experience something that maybe they wouldn't get a chance to. And you saw the symphonic band at the graduation. Our orchestra program, you might be jealous, when they went to the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra, they got to see a Beatles tribute, and they also had some orchestra members come out and talk to them. They invited a string quartet from the Cincinnati Orchestra to visit them in their classroom this year. The Butlerville Harmonic performed for Garfield Middle School, and the cool part about this performance, Jack Holt, he conducted a song that he composed as an eighth grader, it's called "March in C Minor." As an, as an eighth grader, he composed it, as a ninth grader, he was able to talk to these eighth graders, you can see them in the audience, I didn't snap a picture fast enough, but there were several that were high-fiving them. Our visual arts program has a plethora of opportunities for our students, anything from regular art classes to our mural classes. So there is a current interest in public art murals. We start the program at the freshman building now, it's in its third year of existence. Melissa Peterson runs the program, and she brags about how that they've worked together to form a lot of positive artwork in the building. She focuses on group work. Paul Lowly is in charge of the high school murals class. He has a lot of experience making murals for outside in the community, as well as with his students in the classroom. He works with the client-based idea, helping students work with the client, create a design, plan the project, and then execute it. We finished the year with our high school art show that is in-house and presented for students. Now, you might be wondering why I have a dead possum on the page, but I do have to say it is creepy good. A student made this in her 3D class, and it has the weight of a dead possum, as well as the detail, which you cannot see, this possum is foaming at the mouth. The picture of, I guess, the tree man, I love it, and I want to say that I thought it was material when I first saw it, but no, it's just painting techniques that Kalen Washburn created when she did this piece, along with a portfolio of work, she's waiting to hear if she's invited to New York because of her artwork, she's a gold, a Gold Key Things that I'm planning, I need to up my game with the social media, we have most of our hits on our Fine Arts Facebook page, I need to work a little bit more with Twitter, I need to work a little bit more with the district website. I have been doing a look into fine arts and sharing that with the high school staff, and I plan to extend that to the junior high staff and the community, just so that they get a better understanding of what we do each week, because we are constantly busy in the fine arts world. With the community, I want to try to work in some artwork with the Hamilton City Council Meeting. Our, our digital photography teacher, Leslie Getz, is working on a program with the Fit and Center, where students are going to be encouraged to take pictures of the 17 neighborhoods for the 17 Strong Program, and if that goes over the way we plan it, then I hopefully will be able to present some of those pictures at a city council meeting as well. Garfield Lights, we had to rent lights for some of our May concerts, an upgrade is needed, we are working on that, I'm working with Jeff Kilby, he applied for a grant with energy optimizers, and we'll wish for the best and see where we can move forward from there. Storage is always an issue in the Hamilton City Schools, I'm sure in all departments, so we are taking inventory, we are prioritizing, and we're gonna do some decluttering. The Hamilton High stage is going to be sanded down to the bare minimum and then see what we can fix so we can make it more, not just better in appearance, but we need to make it safer for our students. And then I heard just yesterday that we're doing the same thing to the Garfield stage, which both are desperately needed. We're going to introduce guitars to the general music classes at Wilson, gonna take a little bit of clarinet lessons myself, so I'm not out of the loop when it comes to band teachers. We have new standards presented by the state that I will be reviewing, organizing, and making accessible for our teachers for the new school year. And then if you have time, I do have the Alive video from our Anharmonics group, if you would like to see it.
You guys need to see this.
I was born in a thunderstorm. I grew up overnight. I played alone, I played on my own. I survived. I had one way ticket to a place where all the demons go. Oh, where the wind don't change and nothing in the ground can never grow. No hope, just lies, it's hard to cry in your pillow. But I survived. I'm alive. I'm alive. I found solace in my strangest place, way in the back of my mind. I saw my life in strangers' faces, and it was mine. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I had made every single mistake that you could ever possibly make. I took, and I took, and I took, but you gave. You never noticed that I was in pain. I knew what I wanted, I waited, got it. Did all the things that you said that I wanted. Told you that I would never be forgotten. I'm still breathing. 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 I'm alive. I'm breathing, I'm 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 breathing. I'm alive. That was incredible.
I am a proud mom of a high soprano, you might not hear her, because her job is, her job is to blend in.
I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I had made every single mistake that you could ever possibly make. I took, and I took, and I took, but you gave. You never noticed that I was in pain. I knew what I wanted, I waited, got it. Did all the things that you said that I wanted. Told you that I would never be forgotten. I'm still breathing. 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 I'm alive. I'm breathing, I'm 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 breathing. I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm breathing, I'm breathing. 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 I'm alive. I'm alive. I'm breathing, I'm breathing. 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 I'm still 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 breathing. I'm alive. I'm breathing, I'm 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 breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I'm still breathing. I had made every single mistake that you could ever possibly make. I took, and I took, and I took, but you gave. You never noticed that I was in pain. I knew what I wanted, I waited, got it. Did all the things that you said that I wanted. Told you that I would never be forgotten. I'm still breathing. 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 I'm alive. I'm breathing, I'm 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 breathing.
It also allows me to sign the 412 certificate, which I'll be signing after this meeting. And that basically says we have the money in the reserves in order to meet our financial obligations. The state auditor uses financial forecasts in order to find schools that are in financial distress that may need some help. But really what we use it for is it's a management tool for us. We have weekly cabinet meetings and we throw ideas around as far as things that maybe we want to do for the school district or upcoming projects. And we can throw those ideas after we do a cost study and see how much those things are going to cost or save or whatever and throw those through the forecast software and see what the financial implications are for the district. So it is actually really helpful for us. So what is the forecast? And why do we do it? Well, number one, we're required. Like I said, we have to do it twice a year. We present a November forecast and then we have an update in May. It does have to be board-approved. The forecast is it's a snapshot financial analysis. So what does that mean? We take everything that we know about upcoming revenues and expenditures and bring that to bear and try to make some assumptions. Obviously, it's a projection, so there's a lot of unknowns and we'll talk about that. But that's what it is. It's what we know at a specific given time, which is why it changes every year. When we're talking about the forecast, we're only talking about the general fund. The school district has various funds. We've got capital improvement funds. We've got debt service funds. We've got food service funds. We've got state and federal grants. We're only talking about the general fund. The general fund is our largest fund. It's our operating fund. And depending on the year, the operating fund has a budget somewhere around $115 million. So we're talking about a lot of money here. And what the general fund pays for is most folks' salaries and benefits. I'll show you a pie chart here coming up. That's most of what the expenditures are in the general fund. We also pay utilities from the general fund. We pay things like bus fuel and school supplies out of the general fund. And the forecast is it's an eight-year... We look at eight years when we're talking about the forecast. We have three years of history and we also have five years of projection, with the first year projection being the current year. So here's what we're looking at. This is a graphical representation of the numbers that are in the forecast. You can see the blue columns represent total general fund revenues. The red column represents total general fund expenses. And if you can see that green line running through the graph, that represents the resulting cash balance. So you can see in fiscal year '23 and '24, the blue columns or revenues outpace expenditures, which builds cash balance. We see that start in 2025, that trend to reverse as we are predicting throughout the forecast period. If you can see the blue columns, it's relatively flat. And we're also predicting expenses to increase. That being said, there's a lot of conservatism that are built into those blue columns and the revenue projections. And we'll talk about those here coming up. But I mean, it's everything from what do we think the biennial budget's going to do? How is that going to play into the new funding formula for schools? What do we think student enrollment's going to be? All the way down to what's the projection for interest rates over the next five years? And with all of those revenue items, we try to be consistent or conservative. Like I said, there's a lot of unknowns with the forecast and projecting out five years. How do I go back?
Hit your back arrow.
Back arrow. There we go. There's a lot of unknowns. So what's going to happen with the biennial budget? We're in FY '24 now. There are two more biennial budgets throughout the forecast period because we're forecasting all the way through FY '28. We have an idea of what we think is going to happen. And again, we're conservatively projecting that out, but we really, really don't know. What's going to happen with property value increases? We just had a large property value increase in the city of Hamilton of 33% on the residential side in 2023. And we're going to have another value increase in 2026 because that happens every three years. And again, that's a... We have a conservative projection as a key assumption moving forward. And then negotiated agreements for wages. Every negotiated agreement that we have currently, even the rollovers that we have just done, they run out before the end of the forecast. So we really don't know what's going to happen with those or where we're going to be. So because there's a lot of unknowns, we have to make some assumptions. So on the revenue side, property tax, like I said, we just had a 33% increase. That's not historically accurate of what's happened in the past. So we've got about a 5%. Five to 6% increase on the residential side moving forward. Obviously, if that comes in higher, it'll benefit us. The school funding formula, we are assuming a continuation of the current formula. All indications are that the next biennium are going to continue that, as well as a cost study to update the FY '24 cost inputs, which is basically what it costs to run the district. So we have a conservative number in there as far as what we think the state's going to come back with. And that goes to our base cost, which drives the formula. I added a slide this time for this update because a key factor in our revenue projection, obviously, number one is school funding, but two is enrollment decline because we are funded on the number of students we have here. And we'll see that here in a second where that's trending. And then other income. The biggest driver of other income is interest revenue. And I think we all know interest rates have been through the roof. And that's been a good thing for us this year is we've gotten some additional revenue that perhaps we weren't expecting. But throughout the forecast period, we've brought that back in line with historical trends. And then on the expense side, we've put in the negotiated agreements that we have just passed. Healthcare, I've brought that into a market rate, which I just got an update on that. Market rates anywhere from 8% to 10% for the Cincinnati market. It has historically been so. And then as Mr. Wright talked about earlier, special ed needs and ESL needs especially, we have assumed that those expenses are going to be increasing. I mean, what did we say? Did you say 2,500%? So not nearly that much throughout the forecast period, but we are projecting an increase in those areas of expenditure. Let's take a look at this district enrollment here. So forever and a day, it has always been reported. Hamilton City Schools, 10,000 student district. That's what we always... Anytime you read something in the paper, that's what it was. If we look at 2024, we're getting funded on 8,373 students. So a significant drop from what we would historically think would be Hamilton City Schools. And we are projecting that to go lower and continue to go lower. We don't know... And we talk about this all the time. Where's the bottom? We don't know that necessarily, but the best we can do is guess. Again, if these numbers are flat, if we're continuing to be funded on 8,300 students, I mean, that... Those revenue columns and the cash balance are going to look drastically different moving forward. We just don't know. And again, we're taking a conservative approach on the trend and how we think it's going. But again, that could definitely change. So...
Mr. Fraser, would you attribute the enrollment numbers down as a result of some of the ed choice?
I think that's definitely possible.
Okay.
I also think that people just aren't having as many kids.
Yeah, that's true.
And I'll chime in. We had UC do a 10-year study back in, I don't know, 2017 or 2018. And this was predicted in Butler County is that there was just a decline in birth rates in this county, which is the number one predictor. We don't have, in a general sense, a lot of move-ins or move-outs throughout the county. And they did predict a decline in enrollments over that 10-year span. Now, once again, I think COVID, we lost a significant number of students that I can't tell you where they are. And every district is that way from pre-COVID to post-COVID. There's been a group of students that no one nationally, statewide, even locally, can identify where exactly those kids are. What we do know, they're not enrolled. And we're not receiving funding for them. And you see some differences with that. And so I also think in certain neighborhoods in Hamilton, they're older neighborhoods. And we need an infusion of younger families in those neighborhoods with kids. And so there's a lot of components that are involved with that.
I do... Thank you. I do remember that UC's study that we've done.
Ms. Baker, if I may to just add, just to kind of give you an idea. So right now, our ninth grade class is our largest class in the district. And this is updated as of March. So that class was 736. I've been in the district for 11 years. When I was in student services prior, we only had like one or two classes out of the 13 classes kindergarten through 12th grade that were below 700. Right now, today, we only have two classes, the sixth grade class and the ninth grade class that are above 700. Every other class is in the 600s somewhere. So that just kind of gives you an idea of the change in the 11 years that I've been in the district.
I think that's the main... I mean, just personally, I have three kids. Most of my friends have one, two, or three. There are... I know of, you know, one family that has more than that. I mean, it's just people aren't having that many. I mean, my wife's family, my father-in-law is one of eight or nine, and my mother-in-law is the same way. It's just not that way anymore. There's just not that many kids to go around.
Pretty expensive to have that.
Absolutely. So as far as updates from November, you probably noticed that this forecast looks really different than November. There's a lot of stuff that happened since November. We have rolled over almost all of our contracts. I believe we still have one left to negotiate. But we're in a good position right now. I mean, the district is... We're going to end the year over $50 million. We're in a position to give money, which is fantastic, especially when you read the news. Seems like every other day, we've got, you know, we get an update that some school is in financial distress. So we've had money, we've given money, and I think that's a fantastic thing. But obviously, that's something that we didn't know in November and that we have now. The school funding formula has not been in our favor this year. We have received additional monies, but since November, they've started pulling back a little bit, especially in our restricted general fund dollars where we're talking about economic disadvantaged funding. So we call that DPIA, disadvantaged pupil impact aid, and on some transportation funding. So what we thought we were going to get in November, the state has since pulled back a little bit. And we know now where we're most likely going to end the year. And we have also baked that pullback into future years, just in case the state decides to do a similar thing. So again, that's a conservative aspect on the revenue side, but I think it's warranted. And then we know more now about our wind down of our COVID funds. And I want to take a minute to thank administration, give you guys some kudos, and the board as well for actually letting the administration work the plan that we've had. You know, I talked a little bit about districts in the news, and I think some of that has to do with wind down plans of what happens when these federal COVID dollars go away. And we have worked at such that we're going to have an extremely soft landing when those dollars come back to the general fund. And I just want to thank you guys for doing a fantastic job and thank the board for allowing that process to happen. So those are the updates from what we thought we knew in November to what we know now. So we're talking about general fund. Where's our money come from? Most of our dollars come from the state in this district, 76%. And we get those in the form of payments twice a month from the state of Ohio. 18% of our general fund revenues come from local taxpayers, which is in the form of property taxes. And then 6% is all other revenue. Like I said before, most of that is interest earnings, as well as some various reimbursements. The largest of that is Medicaid reimbursements. And then what do we spend the money on? 82% of the general fund is salaries and bennies. And it's that way with every school district. Schooling is a personnel-based business, and that's where we put most of our dollars. 14% are purchased services. Those are things like utilities. Then another large one would be contract for special ed services and those types of things. And then all other expenditures, most of that's supplies. And that's going to be school supplies, fuel, and those types of items. So really, in summary, the two major factors for the differences are the negotiated agreements that we've done after the November forecast and the pullback of the state on some of those restricted general fund line items. So if we don't take anything away other than these two items here from the forecast, this is really what we want to focus on. Moving forward, we're going to keep watch these two items extremely closely. What's going on with the state funding formula as it relates to the biennial budget? That thing changes every two years. We make assumptions. But there are some things that we don't know that are going to happen, happen. And we have to be prepared for that. And student enrollment. Like I said, we're guessing right now with student enrollment. It's an educated guess. But those two factors together make up what we get in funding from the state. And since that's almost 80% of our revenue, that's really where we have to focus our efforts and make sure that we're on top of things so that we can do the things that we have done here in the past moving forward with giving money and putting projects in place and those types of things. But that's really the main focus moving forward is those two key factors. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Comment. You and I chatted a little bit yesterday. I had a few questions and it was why our cash balance is being down. But you know, I have to compliment you, Mr. Fraser. You are always on top of this, you know, along with the administration. How difficult is it to do a three-year forecast, let alone an eight-year forecast with lots of unknown factors out there? But how strategic the administration has been going through... I mean, these were turbulent times. COVID, all these things, you know, trying to manage those COVID funds. So we stuck to the plan and recognized how we had to downsize as a result of those extra dollars. So I just have to compliment you and the staff of really being very fiscally responsible, I think.
Thank you.
I'd have to agree, Jeremy. The planning is so difficult in education because the biennial budget is the... dictates everything, especially... I don't think people realize how much we depend upon the state as opposed to other districts that are just flip-flopped from where we are and how they get funded and how much of an impact that has and how volatile that can be when we have to depend on state funding. I'd like to go back to the whole vouchers thing for a second. Do we have an accurate idea of how many kids are currently supposed to be here that are not here?
I'll take that one. They took the ability away from us several years ago to view that information. So we just simply... So we just simply do not have, we have an educated guess, but we don't know where we could in the past see exactly how many students. They took the ability for us to view that away. What was that, maybe two years ago, Jeremy? Maybe three?
We could view it the first year.
Yeah.
That year was actually a direct line item expense on our bi-monthly foundation reports. It was money that was actually going out the door from us. If I remember right, it was somewhere in the realm of $870,000 for the year.
Well, when you consider that, the last thing I saw was a billion dollars toward the state.
Statewide.
Statewide. And what, what is, 1.2 billion dol- billion with a B coming out of the state coffers. At some point, that has to affect what's going into public school coffers.
And I'm sure.
And I mean, we all have an issue with the vouchers system. It just, the impact that it can have on our schools is very concerning to me about how many of our students are leaving and that leaves us in a financial bind.
Well, in the last several years, the state's been pretty rich as far as where, where they've actually come in on their revenue projections versus what they thought. I read an article either yesterday or the day before where revenues are down about 8% in the state of Ohio. So that, that could be coming to a head sooner rather than later.
And that's scary because they have to figure out how to.
Well, it's, it's interesting how the state can find 1.2 million for vouchers.
Billion.
Billion. Billion for vouchers, but they've always said we don't have the money for the public schools.
Exactly. Public and, you know, not just secondary, but even college level. But, but all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you're right, 1.2 billion is magically here.
Is there a reason why there's no transparency in that, those numbers? I mean, I'm sure there's a reason why they're not being transparent. But are they giving a reason why they're not disclosing, I'll say disclosing, that information?
I do not know the exact reason why we no longer have access to that, if that's what you're asking.
We could always do a public records request.
It'd be a long file.
If I could make a couple of real quick comments. I had the opportunity yesterday to meet with a representative from Governor Dewine's office. And one of the questions that was asked of me is that what, what are some of the challenges you see in public education today? And it really came down to three things. I, I think staffing's an issue. I think funding's an issue. And I think ed choice vouchers are an issue. And I think those are going to be the three biggest issues going out 36 to 60 months. But another thing, and I want to compliment Jeremy, I mean, we meet every week, he is on top of this. We talk about a lot of different things. And the problem right now, and I said this to the gentleman, is that it's a moving target where the formula that was agreed to in the biennium budget in June, they've tweaked and changed that from November till now. So we're trying to project based off the information that we have and now it's changed. And, and so you see some of those challenges and, and we're working based off a biennium or a two-year period of time. And, you know, it's really challenging to do that. And every time there's a tweak or change, we sit down and go, oh my goodness, how is this going to impact us? Because the, the other thing that I want to bring to your attention is that when you saw the chart and it had 82% of our dollars go towards staff and I believe it was 14% that went towards purchase services. I think that's a little misleading because in some districts, the purchase services are things such as instructional coaches that they purchase through the ESC where we're hiring those individuals ourselves. So it's still personnel. It's just going to look like, okay, we're at 75% with our, you know, personnel services, but I'm at 22% with purchase services. Well, it may be because they're going outside the district. So really, when you start looking at that, we will look a little higher than some districts on, on the amount of money we spend on pers- on, on personnel through the general fund. But if you include the purchase services piece, it usually equals out. We're, we're fortunate to have those individuals that work for us. I think you get, I think you get a, a pretty significant commitment when they're working for you as opposed to a third-party vendor, which is what an ESC is.
Well, we're thankful that we have you as our treasurer, Mr. Fraser, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. It looks like no other questions? Okay, it looks like I need a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser, call the roll.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.